Thank you, Mr. Mayor. District one, Councilman Rios.
Here.
District two, Councilman Pusstore is its huge. District three, Councilman Lethem.
Present.
District four, Vice Mayor Stapleton.
Here.
District five, Councilman Gonzalez.
Here.
District six, Councilman Shipley.
Here.
Mayor Gamarrows.
Here.
We have a call, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Shelley. Shelley, can you leave us in the kitchen?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dear Heavenly Father, I thank you for your many blessings and the opportunities that you've provided for this community. We are thankful for your guidance and the commitment of this council to meet and put time into city staff and the projects that you have allowed the City of Globe to complete. We ask that you protect city staff as they protect and serve this community. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Our differences to a class of the United States of America and to one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I was swimming yesterday. First time after eighteen hours, and I thoroughly enjoyed it. Watched the sun go down, got cold in my home. So I hope you all are doing the same thing. It's really neat to have eighteen hours. We appreciate that. The other thing I want to remind everyone is we still have a lot of threat for wildland fire out there. Be very careful when you're dealing with fire out there. Make sure you pay attention and also, if your flooding is out, but you definitely had much of them on, so please pay attention to women, of course. That's all I have.
Thank you, Warren.
Thank you.
Well, I'd just like to say thank you to everybody who worked really hard to make Arizona Rural Policy Forum a success. And I'm sure there's always things that we could have done a little bit better, but I thought it went really well. I've got a lot of positive feedback. It's always good to get people from outside the community to come in and see it and do that, and bring them back. So thank you to everybody who worked hard to make that happen.
Thank you, Freddie.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry about that. I also want to commend all those workers and organizers for the Rural Policy Forum. I was fortunate enough to make one in the days. The first day I just had so much work going on, I couldn't break away. But the event that I did go to and just seeing all the number of participants, it looked like it was a really good turnout. And some of the speakers that I was able to hear really had some good, great information to share. So I think we were really fortunate to have the Arizona Rural Policy Forum here in the Miami Globe area this year. And hopefully, as Councilman Shipley says, it provides a better outlook for Globe and all those constituents that came from all over the state really to see Globe. So, am I? So congratulations to all that put this together. Thank you.
Thank you, Freddie.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to reiterate what was discussed tonight. A couple of members have said how great city staff was. They worked overtime, saw them out there changing bags and fitting city repairs, as well as all of our foreowners and from people that live here, residents. It just was an amazing turnout. Thank you.
I really don't have anything, everything except, other than, first Friday was canceled due to the heat. I understand that. And we'll continue on in September. And also, I understand the hamburger fry, not cute, as well. So I think everything will resume come September's. So please join us back when everything is through. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. I also want to echo about the Rural Policy Forum. Thank you to everybody that participated, that helped, especially Thursday night, getting the food up. I think if one thing we need to change is serve the people on the first floor. There was a lot of work getting that food back up there and all the equipment back down, especially with one elevator. So that was the only difficult part. I was fortunate to be part of the tour. There was about fifty-five people that went on the tour. We had a coach bus that the Capcom provided. And we went and visited different areas, like the pool, the Hill Street School project, Conning Bridge. And then we went to Miami, visited various things. A lot of positive comments, questions. They were amazed of all the projects that are truly going on in our city. And they were truly, and they want to come back. They want to know how we did, if moves have changed. So there was a lot of good input from various people. So again, thank you to everybody that was involved and probably worked here too, helping us on that those days, helping us to keep the food up and down. So again, thank you. And that's all I have.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, thank you very much. No, the Rural Policy Forum, it was a big hit. I think Globe has a lot to offer, a lot to talk about, and we were able to show that off and to many people. I think this next coming week, we'll be meeting together with other members of other cities, and you'll hear that echoed. A lot of work by everyone. Kudos to, you know, Development Services and all they did to keep everything going. And a lot of little twists and turns that we had to solve those problems. And then the Republic Works were kind of scrucining up the city before the event. The open swim, so a funny thing happened when school started. All our lifeguards went back to school. I guess it was predictable. But so we have a modification in the hours that we're doing, and we are keeping normals, our open swim Thursday, Friday, Saturday, noon to five. And we added a early swim to Saturday, and that was, I think, positive. But we're moving to a six to nine open swim Monday through Thursday. And I hear that's been popular, at least at the very beginning. So it's our, it fits in with the lifeguard schedules and keeps the pool available. And luckily, it's been hot enough to be enjoyable at nine o'clock at night. And other than that, just really busy. It's those, you know, got the budget done, and we're catching up on, catching up on stuff and getting ready for, you know, get through the summer and get ready for a productive late summer in fall. So, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, that's all I have.
Thank you. We have a call to the public. I have no call for it. Do you have those, can you play it online or on the phone?
Mr. Mayor, we did receive an email for a call to the public. As I recall, I think that, and we saw this last, about two meetings ago, we normally, Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, when we have called the public that criticizes city staff, if you'd like, I would like to, rather than read this verbatim, generalize a couple of, a couple of issues, and then, but I think I can do it without keeping the meat and potatoes. Or if you want, I can read it straight out. Okay.
I'm going to make a comment.
I mean, it's
Yeah, I just, you know, those are, those are really touching situations. I applaud when our residents and our constituents have concerns to raise and they, you know, voice their opinions and their, and their concerns in call to the public, because that is the public's time to make a comment. But I think it's, it's out of taste when the comment turns into an attack on a staff member or a city employee. I think those kinds of conversations should be held in confidence with probably the city manager or the department head, if that's the progression of, you know, chain of command. But I think addressing abrasive or aggressive comments in public, in a public setting, is probably not the best way to express your concern. That's just my own personal opinion. I think there's a certain decor that we all need to obtain and uphold, not just Mayor, Council, and staff, but citizens as well. I mean, there's a proper way to voice your concern. But using vulgarities and very pointed abrasive language is probably not conducive to a good outcome. So that's just my comment.
So, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, it is not abrasive, but it is something that addresses safety issues, and it's kind of hard to throw those out there without having that. I think the other thing we could do is we could read it in full and then use our ability to respond to criticism, so I can, I can make some statements to, to put it in context. Do you think that would be?
I think we need to read it in full.
Yeah, okay.
I would agree with you. We need to call the public, because they want to get after calling the public.
Okay.
But any criticism that we were able to respond to.
Well, yeah, and if it's okay, if I can respond, and just in generalities.
There's always two sides to the story.
Yeah, okay. Okay. And it isn't, it isn't, like I say, it isn't naming any person, and there's no bulk, vulgarity, but it is something that I just wanted to have a chance to see where you were at on that and also to know that I can follow up a little bit. Okay.
As long as there's a name to the
Yes, oh yeah, no, it's named. So no problem there. I can take it. So I will do the So this is an email from Sarah Langston. Says, "To Council, my name is Sarah, and I am a former resident of the City of Globe. While I was visiting, I was able to enjoy the new pool facility a few weekends ago. It brought back such great memories from when I was younger and I wanted to say thank you because the facility is beautiful. I wanted to make sure that you check into a few things that I noticed while I was there, because I do care about my hometown. While swimming with my nephew, I noticed that there was a bump and almost like a ripple in the liner of the shallow and a few of the walls of the pool that I thought you should know about. I'm sure that you're looking into it. But the biggest issue that I wanted to bring to your attention is that I also noticed several of the lifeguards on cell phones while in the lifeguard towers or sitting at the edge of the pool. If they were not on their phones, they have their AirPods in their ears and were just not attentive to the citizens in the pool. I did try to bring this to the attention of the lifeguard that was there, but he did not seem to really want to be bothered. I did attempt to find a manager who was on, who was an adult, but I was, but there was no one on site. I know that safety is a huge priority of the council, and that is why I wanted to bring this to your attention. While the pool is something shiny, new, and beautiful, it would be a shame for it to have it tarnished by an unfortunate event, because being on a cellphone was more important than watching the citizens in the water. And I will tell you that cellphone usage is something that we have stressed, that is not allowed, and we will follow up, look at that. Also, the AirPods, I don't understand how that impacts people or what they do with AirPods. I guess they listen to them. I don't know. But we don't know what was going on here. So I think that safety is number one. This is why we have a number of lifeguards that we have, and we will follow up and see if we can figure out, you know, again, just reinforce with the lifeguards, no phones, and see what the ruling is on the AirPods. So that is, it says at the very end, "Thank you for your time, Sarah Langston, visitor and former resident of City of Globe." And that's the only comments we have.
Okay.
And just a comment to you, but I don't see what that was an issue, do you even read that? I don't see if that is abrasive or anything.
Okay.
I think that was a very well concerned brought in by this individual. There shouldn't have been a question about reading any of that.
Okay. And
There's a need to address it.
Okay. Okay.
If I could just clarify, my comments were a reflection of the previous one we had a couple of weeks ago that was pretty, pretty strong language. Okay. And I thought we were going to hear another one. I just wanted
So, and that's, and that's why
You have the decor, and we should follow.
And I was thinking more of that one was, and so we kind of, if that's a, if that's a bar, I just wanted to get council's, council's view on that and see, see how far we'd go and where we could go. But I do appreciate the chance to, to make a little bit of a follow-up statement on that. And so
Special presentation, ceremonial matters, we need to read it with you. We will pay me and me. I was asked if we could do that. So first of all, recognition of the retirement of Brian Haller, water plant operator after ten years of service.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Next edition, I'm not asking for money, but I'm honored here. Sorry, I wrote a little something and kind of followed it, but I'm honored to be here today to celebrate the retirement of one of our most dedicated employees, Brian Haller. After ten years of service After ten years of service for our small city of Globe, it's time for him to retire and enjoy the fruits of his life. Before coming on work for the city, he worked twenty-three years as a railroad, or the railroad car maintenance foreman. His career with the city as a meter reader. And after three years of reading meters and performing the duties of a meter reader, he took the position of water plant operator training. Working on a cutter for seven years, Brian worked his way up to lead plant operator. He trained several meters within his time, several meter readers within his time, and he also trained plant operators. He witnessed several upgrades to the city's water system and speedo system. He helped bring Cutter Water Plant to its optimal operations. He'll set with several rehabs of wells and boosters and general maintenance of the plant. Brian was key person in our sampling sites, created sample sites. He got the wells to be automated, they were doing handwriting journal entries. He got a program to make it automated. He was the key person in the startup of Crestline Booster and Beneath Booster, and he's been the key role in all of our well rehabs also. So his experience in industry was valuable. It was invaluable in helping us improve our water system. This is dedication, hard work, and commitment to excellence. We wish him all the best in retirement and hope that he enjoys every moment. Thank you for your service, Brian, and congratulations on your retirement.
Well, since the week I've been retired, I told her, "Look, my blood pressure went down to normal." As he says, there's probably blood to normal too. Our Councilman, thank you, and it's a privilege to work and serve under you. And thank you for your dedication to make the city as it can be, and there's more work that can be done. And Paul, and your work, I think with the pay rate schedule, I forget what you call it. They encourage you to continue that. And the evaluation process, I think that's one of the best things that can be utilized to help develop your employees and encourage them to stay with the city. Thank you.
Thank you. So, wait, 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 don't go back. We still, you want, yeah, no, we're not done with you. No, no, come back, Vince, come back.
You gotta get a mug shot.
Yeah. We, we need a picture too.
Brian, on behalf of the Mayor and Council, I would like to, Council would like to present you with a flash for your team.
Get the, get the good picture. Actually, yeah.
Our pictures.
Okay.
Blood pressure go back up. So itemated recognition of retirement of Richard Thomas, Public Works Streets Facility Superintendent, after nineteen years of service for the City of Globe.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Would like you to join me and the rest of the group here to celebrate Richard's nineteen-year career with the City of Globe. Usually I do just things on the fly, but actually I think it's really important to put a couple of points to what he's done throughout these years. And even that, I don't have enough paperwork in front of me to register all that. Richard told me that if I could keep it simple, because he knows it's kind of hard for both of us at this point, because we've worked together for so long, and he's moved up to the ranks, and that's truly why he gets the respect that he does for me and not only me, but his crew. So Richard started his career August ninth, two thousand and four. One of the last of the garbage, or sanitation engineers, we would call them, back of the garbage truck, and worked his way up to the position he currently holds. Before we switched over to rat company, and like I said, he actually wrote in fact many years and kind of wasted some talent there for a couple of years because we weren't aware of the skills. Shortly after, once we actually contracted the private company, it was able to be moved over to our brush crew, and that's when we started seeing some of us by taking care of the daily work orders and doing different work sites for us. We really realized the education, background, and experience he had. It didn't take long for us to gravitate him, working towards our sidewalk repairs, you know, our street maintenance, you know, and Richard really jumped right into that. You know, it wasn't a question of when or how, it's just, he just actually was natural because he operated, wrote, made his previous to Maricopa County. He became my right hand, you know, and a lot of the projects, he started working with me and, you know, scheduling, striping, you know, measuring streets, laying these projects out. Shortly after, actually, he took over those projects for me and giving me an opportunity to grow as well as he was. And I was able to work with engineering. He worked with Yuri Alcariz, which is here tonight, and other staff members in our engineering. So you've seen him here whenever we do our annual chip show projects, because he's following it and seeing that through. So he's been a key player for all those projects. You know, example of that, most recently, you know, when we're talking about scheduling and going above and beyond, some of the staff members are here tonight as well. You know, Richard's worked with those guys when they come in to help the businesses, so we don't disturb downtown area, painting crosswalks, doing the striping for parking spots. As minimal as that may seem, it takes a long time and a lot of effort to do that. And when those guys come in at twelve midnight, you know, one of them comes from Superior Driving Lane, he leaves his home at eleven o'clock to be here by twelve, so they can get, be done by six a.m. That's the kind of work that they're doing. Some of those staff members are here tonight. Richard was a key component for setting up our first initial Grisbee Golf Course up at, okay, but I was going to say, I'm sorry, Old Dominion Park, with the previous city manager who walked that trail. They left me sitting in the shade, and I actually, at that point, I knew it was time for Richard to start moving up. But he actually walked that with previous city manager, and they laid that out, and that was our first Grisbee Golf Course that was set up. One of the other key components that actually did, Councilman Shipley would know this, when our mob, when we started taking down our streetlights and adding the stop signs in the mob, worked on our North Drive project, they did that first phase from Tascans to Yuma. Actually, Richard and one other staff member were the members that actually continued that process with the curves and additional sign to the papers. So actually, he was key. One of the other employees worked with him through that project. So that's one of the main ones, actually, I can truly remember. He was out there every day, you know, following up with that until it was done. He's taken over special events for many years. Everybody saw and knew me out there for that. That's Richard now, you know, and has been for the last few years. I've actually attended a few special events myself, which, you know, really seemed odd not being the guy out there. Richard and his crew have been out there, you know, and I've often referred to Richard as my right hand, and that would still be an understatement. He has helped this community in so many ways with events, routine daily response, maintenance, residential concerns, emergency response, and still managed to replace our Christmas decorations downtown and add some color. And everybody was kind of, every year they'd pop up, they knew it was Christmas, but they just didn't have that flash. Richard's the one that was, the one that actually took that, you know, initiative to get some color up there, change the scene, and, you know, that's, so he's, that's, that's one of his marks out there. Also working with staff to lay out our dog park. You know, that's become one of the most utilized spaces that originally, when we started the project, we just kind of stretched our head and bought the dog park. But look at it now. You know, it's continuously growing, so, you know, he was a key point on that. You know, also, when we started the TP project, which everybody knows about, when we demoed the first building next to it, Richard and some staff members were the first ones that did the foundation work to secure that site, do some stepwork work, and paint it the first time around, get it ready, so our artist can come in and finalize that. So he'll, I'm sure he'll always be proud of the TP's. Most recently, Richard's taken on the pool maintenance part of that, and we all know there's going to be lots of maintenance with that. You know, so he's kind of geared up some of our staff members to do the first initial run of the season. But there's a lot of work, and that includes with everything else we do. I'll shorten this up here. I've got two more things I'd like to share with council. Often, council meetings, acknowledgements, or thanks is given to me as a director of public works, truly because of dedicated staff members like Richard Thomas, that our department can be relied upon over and over to be successful. I've always said, when I reach my retirement, I would like to know that I left a positive change or my mark in this community. Tonight, Richard, I'm proud to tell you, you've served this community, have definitely made your mark, and made the City of Globe Public Works Department proud. I miss you, you've truly been missed. Thank you. Congratulations.
You want, I want to say, you know, I've got a lot of work to like to say thank you, and my time here has been great. So I appreciate everybody and you have.
So what a consent calendar. Matters listed under the consent count are considered to be routine, will be enacted with one motion and one vote. Public curating items are designated with an asterisk. Prior consideration of the consent agenda, Mayor will ask whether any member of the public wishes to approve a public curating item for separate consideration. Members of the council and/or staff members in the item for separate consideration also. If item A, consideration of waiver of section three S four, that's pending, practice push notes to the law. Action on the balance of consent agenda. Item A one, non payable five hundred and seventy-nine thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty-eight cents. A two, consideration of approval of minutes. And A, June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, meeting minutes. Anybody from staff, public, or council who are new to these were separate consideration.
See? We don't, nope. I think we're good, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, further comments or questions on the motion to accept the consent, intended as ready? Motion second for approval of consent agenda, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Both nay and you change, and the motion passed. We have no new business, so we'll go to action items. We have action six eight, consideration of proof ordinance number eight eight six for the adoption of fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, property tax rate adjustment in the amount of one thousand one point, I'm sorry, one point two two five five on each one hundred dollars of assessed valuation. Shelley, can you read ordinance number eight eight six, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number eight eight six, an ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of Globe, levying upon the assessed valuation of the property within the City of Globe, subject to taxation, a certain sum upon each one hundred dollars of valuation, sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be required in the annual budget, less the amount estimated to be received from other sources of revenue, providing funds for the general municipal expenses for the fiscal year ending the thirtieth day of June, twenty twenty-four. Is council pleased with that reading?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, I wanted to give just a brief overview of how this works. The levy is the amount of money we are requesting. It is a function of the values and the rate that we charge. So we have assessed values that go up and down based on the economy, and then the rate that we charge. With the passage of the, the sales tax change, we made a commitment to not raise the levy. In order to keep that, because assessed values went up slightly, we were actually lowering the rate, the tax rate, and that is by a fraction, which is point zero one one two percent. Um, and that is by a fraction, which is point zero one, one, two percent. So just enough to do the math to keep the, the levy standard. Now that does not take into account um additional properties, assessed values of properties that have come on in the last year. And so we, we have allowed ourselves to have our, our levy go up based on those. But that, um, this is the second year we've done this and this is the commitment to keep the promises that the council made about holding the property tax stable.
Questions, comments?
There are no questions or comments here on any motion to approve ordinance number eight eight six.
Motion number second for approval of ordinance number eight eight six. Is there any further discussion? Anybody in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay and any standing, motion pass. Item six B, consideration of possible approval of contract number P S dash two zero two three dash zero zero two three one for on-call engineer survey services with risk engineering in the amount not to exceed eighty thousand dollars to be funded out of accounts number ten dash six one dash five one two three four, public works contractual services number five zero dash eight zero dash five one two three four, water contractual service and number five one dash eight zero dash five one two three wastewater contractual services with possible with a reimbursement and or grant reimbursement.
And Mr. Mayor, members of council, um, uh, John, if you want to jump up there, jump up. I, I wanted to explain the, the uh, the budgetary nuances of this. And then if you have any questions about who we're applying with and why, John can respond to that. But the um, I was gonna say, the, we have set aside these on-call contractors. These are like pre-run through the procurement process. So they're on-call, they're available for us. If we have a position, John, clean this up if I say this wrong. Okay, and, and so if we have a, we have a need, we can look at our on-calls, we have set prices, we find out who's available and who can do it quickly. Um, we, we have budgeted eighty thousand in a, in what is actually contingency fund in um public works, eighty thousand in water, eighty thousand in wastewater. Um, these contracts are for the amount of eighty thousand, but that doesn't mean that any one of these would be selected or used to their full. What I will tell you is that we can't go over the eighty thousand because we procured for eighty thousand. So it, it doesn't mean that every contract that you approve is going to receive eighty thousand in, in business from the city. It doesn't guarantee that they'll, um, they'll be included and get any contracts in the city. But it allows us a mechanism to pick who's available. And then it could be that one might go to roads and one might go to wastewater, depending on the structure of the contract. So we, but we have a tracking mechanism of, of the, uh, the money that we have allocated to each department and then the money that we can spend with each one and we'll keep track. Now, because it's in contingency, when we, when we do go to move these, even if they're small, we will have to come and, and move the, the money from contingency to the line item. That can be done very simply if it's under twenty five thousand um on a, uh, on consent. If it's over twenty five thousand, we need to come to you anyway. Okay, so, um, but, but it doesn't mean when we have um twelve of these that we're spending twelve times eighty thousand. It's just we're, you're approving the capacity, um, but you'll also have to approve the actual expenditure.
Well, when you talk about contingency, this is nothing, this isn't coming out of our fund out.
No, this is, this is.
It's already budgeted for this year.
This is preloaded and there, and there was some confusion about whether it was in a contractual line item or in the contingency line item. Um, and, and so the, these are written to where the money will come from the contractual services. But we would have to come back and move that eighty thousand to that contractual line because you cannot budget straight, you cannot pay straight out of contingency. Now, it, it may be that some of these are with a and we can get it reimbursed and um, and don't need to move the money. And so you, you, you may see if there's available money in the contractual line items. But I believe this year what we will be doing is, is moving the money as we need it. Um, and then refilling the pot if we get with the money back. So I know it's, so John, help me. What do you think?
Mayor, council, just to add on to this, typically what we did years, years ago, we set the same setup before as far as having contractual service or on-calls. Uh, but we kind of put a limit on how many we have and we actually put a limit on how much we could do. I mean, not, not so much as far as the funding, because a lot of that we can, just like previously indicated with, with other sources. But what this helps us now, as you've seen, this is the third phase of on-calls that we're bringing to us. It runs our, you know, are really our horizon because we're talking about a lot of funding sources, a lot of projects still in the whims that, you know, like I said previously, we're kind of held to certain amount and actually certain firm room would, would not be able to accommodate what we were looking for as far as building stuffs of work. And then we've even overloaded a possible, you know, an engineering firm that we have to start prioritizing which ones first and they're underneath the calendar event. That puts us with really restricted, you know, timeline for us and them. So by, by broadening this, you know, these contractors, engineer, the on-calls, that gives us an avenue to reach out to them, see who's available and like Paul said, the summers couldn't be related, they're, they're mainly water resources. Some of them will be street and bridges. And that's basically, it's opening this up opportunity for us for our engineering to work better with them on a daily basis. Uh, thank you, Mayor. So, you know, with that in mind, is, is, do you have a process in place where you, you vetted, you selected? Uh, but, you know, if you're to down the road, you might, there might be some other engineering firms out there that maybe providing equal or better services than what you're used to seeing. You have something in place that has a continuation of vetting and processing um additional contractors or alternative contractors? Just, just to keep the market fair.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, uh, council and reels, I, I think that you're right. We're in a dynamic market. Um, I, I think that we're going to, you know, probably go through the eighty thousand capacity within one year and, and have to go and do this again. We may look at, at doing it a, a little broadly, broader. But I, I will also tell you that these are for the kind of the, the low hanging fruit projects and the projects that are the smaller, smaller stuff where we need a surveyor or we need a quick engineer thing, you know, so we don't. Because if one of our big projects would just wipe out one company, you know, right off the bat. And so for the bigger ones, we'll go for a full-blown procurement and guess, get the next market rate uh there. Um, these are, these are kind of geared towards the smaller projects. And um, so, so I, I think that, I think that we'll, we'll be looking at them within twelve, eighteen months.
Yes, and just to add on, it's actually why we're looking at it, Councilman Reals, because when we did the contractual contracts previously, we might, we only had like three. And some of them were not, you know, like I said, could not meet the calendar event that we're working on. So by having additional, then that way we can actually do that research and reach out to them and see where they're at and have these projects. So it's not anyone specific that Paul says, but it actually is for the annual that we're looking at them. Uh, because we actually were kind of confined to only having three. It's just like with their own call or electricians, uh, some of them actually have picked up and gone elsewhere. But there were, those were the three that we originally got contracts for. So we're actually having to go outside that box and find another vendor that's, you know, has resources and actually can accommodate our needs. Um, so that's actually why we're actually broadening the rise of this, this realm to add some more engineering firms.
Yeah, and really my, my thought is, you know, for the cities, um, welfare, best, uh, investment is keeping these, these kinds of contracts competitive, um, really just, I think, gives us the best chance. I mean, that's, that's really why I'm thinking that.
But and, and Mr. Mayor, members of council, council and reels, I mean, it, we have a, we have a inherent responsibility to get the best bang for the buck for the, the people's money. And, and that is what procurement is all about is not, it, it, and now in, in these, these are procured through a, a competitive. I, I don't remember with the contractual, whether it was a year or two years. I'm sure there's a, an expiration date on, on these. But uh, but again, sometimes it's not just that, you know, fraction of a cost, but having to wait six months for them to do the job. I, I think if, if we could get somebody who maybe, you know, two, two to four percent more, but can get up here, you know, uh, in, in our timeframe. So it's, it's, it's a, but, but we're always, like I say, that, that procurement that everybody loves to hate, that's, that's our responsibility to make sure we are getting uh good value for the citizens.
You know, thank you for bringing that forward. I think it's important that we have a, a large list to draw from because of the amount of funding and projects that's going on. We have to be, we have to be on pace. We can't delay it because we can't find some of them. So thank you for bringing that forward and giving us a large list to draw from.
And Mr. Mayor, members of council, it took us a little bit longer than we had hoped to get this forward through the process. We've done it, now that we've done it one time, I think we, we will um, uh, be able to turn this around much faster just doing some recycling. We know, uh, we know more how the process works. And we did this in conjunction with Missy, our procurement, her procurement advisor. And thank you to Shelley, who was also a key part of this. She's, she's so happy.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if there's any comments or questions, um, you don't mind, I won't read it, but I will make the motion to accept uh, actually item six B as red.
Second.
Motion the second for approval of item six B. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay and any standing, motion pass. Item six C, consideration of possible approval of contract number P S dash two zero two three dash zero zero two zero dash one A for on-call civil engineering professional support services with Richard Powers as needed in an amount not to exceed eighty thousand to be funded out of accounts number ten dash six one dash five one two three four, public works contractual services number five one, I'm five zero dash eight zero dash five one two three four, water contractual services and number five one dash eight zero dash five one two three four, wastewater contractual service with possible with a reimbursement and or grant reimbursement.
John, go, go ahead. Can you explain the difference between the, the on-call engineering company and the, our individual on-call engineers?
Yeah, on-call civil engineer was uh Richard Powers, uh, as you know, most of you probably have remembered. He's already been doing works and services. This is rarely renewing that contract, uh, but he's been actually a key component in doing research and helping us uh acquire some bridge funding with our engineer with Luis and also working on the previous uh bridge, uh, you know, work. Uh, he worked with us throughout different projects, sewer, sewer plant, um, and um, that's basically echoing what we did previous. And if you have any questions, I mean, I don't have too much more to add to that.
No question, Congress, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we accept um item six C as red.
Motion the second for approval of item six C. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay and any standing, motion pass. Item six D, consideration of possible approval of contract number P S dash two zero two three dash zero zero two zero dash three for on-call civil engineering and professional support services with Sunrise Engineering as needed in an amount not to exceed eighty thousand dollars to be funded out of accounts number ten dash six one dash five one two three four, public work contractual services, number five zero dash eight zero dash five one two three four, water contractual service and number five one dash eight zero dash five one two three four, wastewater contractual service with possible with a reimbursement and or grant reimbursement. This, Mayor, council, this item before you, um, with Sunrise Engineering is actually one of the new affirments. Luis has gone through the vetting process and found a lot of resources that he felt that this point could be out forward with the city going forward. So this is actually one of our new ones. Historically, they had not done any work for us, but in this process, as you mentioned, Councilman Reals, Luis went through the vetting and he found, does he want to add this company onto that list?
Great. Great. Mayor, I would move to approve item sixteen as red.
Second.
Motion the second for approval of item sixteen as red. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay and any standing, motion pass. Item six E, consideration of possible approval of contract number P S dash two zero two three dash zero zero two three dash two A for on-call engineering survey services with EPS group in an amount not to exceed eighty thousand dollars to be funded out of accounts number ten dash six one dash five one two three four, public work contractual services, number five zero dash eight zero dash five one two three four, water contractual services and number five one dash eight zero dash five one two three four, wastewater contractual service and possible with a reimbursement and or grant reimbursement. Mayor, council, this last item with EPS group, um, historical, uh, they've actually worked with the city of Globe, our highway project for main one, main line, um, that we've replaced years ago. It's actually the, this is the engineering firm that actually designed the work with us to complete that. Uh, they've been, they've worked with us on our common bridge project, on that design work. And then the, this group is actually currently working on the application process with our engineer Luis this for our Yuma Street Bridge. So they're pretty active already with this.
Mayor, I would move to approve item six.
Motion the second for approval of item six E. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You both nay and you stand, motion pass. Thank you, John. Thank you. We go to seven eight, ladies and gentlemen, items, consideration to prove the letter of commitment to the Arizona Department of Transportation that would commit one hundred and sixty five thousand, eight hundred and ninety three dollars in kind mass for, toward the transportation alternatives with grant program for total anticipated two million, nine hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and four dollars if awarded for the Globe Road Bridge sidewalk replacement project. Mayor Luis.
Uh, Mayor and council members, is this a, uh, a small letter that uh we are required to submit with this application where the city commits to the match uh of this grant? Uh, it is very low, it's five forty seven percent. So the match for the city will be a hundred and sixty five thousand, eight hundred dollars. And we are applying for people in that. This is for the sidewalks in downtown. Uh, this is kind of like a brick qualification, city, you know, qualified for this grant. Uh, there is already applicants, so, you know, we are just trying to get, you know, approved. And at that point, we will have to submit that formal application. But this is, you know, just to see if we are the right for this level. Uh, we also have a letter from CAG, uh, for support, that we need to submit to get it tracked as well. And we need to submit this on the T and that's why this is a, you know, the, the item. We hope that, uh, you know, we can get it and we'll get down with sidewalks.
For that. How, so if you find that million records successful, how much of the downtown do you have?
All of it.
Oh, wow, that would be awesome.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, is this a twenty year or a twenty four selected, uh?
No, this is for next year and probably the front four, we just reverse it. We'll try to find. So this, you know, is kind of a lot for us. This is to CAG, it's a payment, this is what we need to be approved and they come back to us.
Thank you.
Question for Luis or Paul, uh, do we know, I know there, how much funding is available for public projects under this program?
Oh, that would be a Luis question.
We don't want any.
Total?
Is it ten million dollars of that twenty million?
Uh, I think it's uh sixteen million.
Sixty one, yeah.
Sixteen million. And uh, when we apply, you know, if we don't get it all, but uh, you know, we'll see how much we can apply for to be half of it, to be, you know, but we're gonna go for the full amount and see what we can get.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, so Luis and, and with, with Rick Powers' help, um, they just did a, a Yuma Street Bridge grant and it was ranked number one with, with CAG. Um, our, our ability to apply for these grants and we, we have the, we have a very solid need. There's no trying to put a, you know, square peg in a round hole. We, we got the, 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 the need down. We got a good grant team and very technical with, with Rick and, and Luis writing these grants. So we really have optimized ourselves. Um, it, the, I, the only thing else that, so we have a, a decent chance, you know, it, it, we, and if we can get partial, that'd be that'd be good, but boy, this is exciting. The five point seven percent match, at this point, I think, one sixty-eight is what it would be, or we would, let's see if we can get it right, one sixty-five, eight ninety-three. We are making the commitment that we would supply the match. We are not allocating or earmarking, you know, locking out anything out of budget. If we get whatever we get, and when we get it, we will look to see where we can pull the money. Talked to Tina with us already, whether we pull it out of the half cent, the HERF money, we could pull it out of general fund if we need to, and it'd be, you know, well worth it. Or there's a couple other buckets that we can find that. So I, we are, this year, we are very alert and conscious to matches. We got so much out there, and we're being very careful, because if we win all these grants, but we can't afford the matches, we're gonna be, we're gonna be no better off, so we're managing that. But this one is such a good ratio, most common match is twenty-five percent, it's five point seven. We will find the money and feel secure that if we get this, we will make it happen.
You know, so some of this money goes to be in-kind match, so, you know, this need to be archived.
And, Mr.
The situation is that there were ten communities applying for these grants, and each community evaluated all of them, except their own, and we came in first place, you know, for the model community. So, and this is where having these consultants helps, because we were able to present twenty-five percent plans for the bridge, and that showed you that you are committed, that you really need it, that you're working on it, you know, so. And also, on Thursday, we have a presentation about Yuma Bridge, CAG, they're quartered. We're preparing a PowerPoint presentation with this, and so we're gonna have in presentation. We feel that we have a really good chance to get it.
And the Sacoa project, that's, this is, this is under the state appropriations that is structured, and the Yuma Bridge is CAG and R-TAC.
I believe so. And, Mr. Mayor, members of council, just one clarification, and Luis, does it, does it require an in-kind match, or is they okay with a cash match?
It could be combination, or, you know, it's actually, we're just saying that we commit to a certain amount, and it will be basically up to the city, you know, how we're gonna, you know, probably the money.
So, and so I just wanted to share with the council, administratively, my goal is always to just count on any type of improvement or investment in the city that we do a cash match. We struggle to make sure we're fully staffed and have the ability to do the maintenance repair that we have. We would not rule out an in-kind match, but I, but I think it would have to be something where it's, you know, we could do it for like one-fourth the price or something like that. It'd have to be something right up our alley that John approves with, because we're struggling enough. We, you know, this is something that John has seen before, where, you know, money is saved by dedicating his people for a special project, and my administrative policy is, let's, if we're gonna apply, let's find the money, make sure we can match it with cash.
Yeah, it, it also, you know, kind of like, Rick Powers is a wage agent, kind of corporate.
No, that would be, yeah, if you could match Rick Powers, yeah. Oh, we could, yeah, we could get a good deal for Rick, so.
I just want to convince that we're going and fighting this and looking, understanding what these are, the community as well as council, and this is such a big issue for me, and has been, with the city's sidewalks fixed. So I commend you for that, that maybe a walkable city is something horrible.
We're gonna go after Caskin, then we're gonna go after, uh.
I'll read you that. So. Go ahead, Mayor.
I'm really encouraged over the last few years. What I've seen is that we're not just fixing the pothole, we're also looking at re-engineering the street, if you will, in general terms. And that is a step forward for the city. Yes, we always have worries and concerns about this or that road, but we're getting into what we need to be doing as a city, which is tackling the redesign of new construction and finding the funds to do that and improve, as you say, street by street with a holistic approach, that's what we're trying to get to, a holistic approach. So when you approached me, and I'm talking to the general public out there, and you approached me with the pothole, yeah, we'll pass it, pothole. We're thinking of redesigning the whole thing, this lane could evaporate. When you talk about sidewalks, we're not gonna just patch a corner, and we're talking downtown, we're gonna do the whole thing, and we may have out of our staff that needs to do that. When you start taking chunks of repairing the infrastructure, this is exactly what we have been trying to do for two years. The funding is there, going after it, they're not gonna sit on a wall somewhere first up, it's gonna work even harder. But the point is, that's how we should attack the presence to the hundred-year-old infrastructure that we have. That's how we do it. And we are riding a line and getting cooperation from all levels of the government. The image of the future is eight months, it's coming up. And so I want the public to be aware, it's not just the pothole, it's the road, and everyone has to notice. That's what happens, Mayor. Thanks.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of council, under this council's leadership, we, the SARS have aligned with us having the administrative and staffing capacity to do all this at the same time that all this money is being shaken loose at federal and state level. The money is out there, and we are thrilled that we have the capacity to take advantage of it, because they're gonna look back twenty years from now and say, wow, that was a spree. We really fixed a lot of aging problems during this council's reign and tenure. Thank you.
Mayor, no other comments or questions? I'd like to second.
Motion second for approval of item seven eight as read. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? Any standing?
Thank you, Luis. We have a second call in the public, do we have any online or idea?
We do. We have another one. I will read this verbatim. This is to council, this is Marshall O'Brien. It says, what? Question mark, question mark, question mark, question mark, question mark. Richard Thomas, dot, 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 dot. John Boy Walton, question mark, times five. I'm not done yet. Good job, Richard, enjoy your retirement, and that's Marshall Scammell. Give thanks for each new day. In caps. As read.
Scheduling of meetings?
Nothing out of the ordinary.
Future gen items?
Well, I'd like to just put it on record, but I think it's something we could discuss. I think we need to look at, I know they've been after me, the Verplata of Arara in Mexico to be a sister city. We need to look at what's the benefits and what is, they need paperwork signed, they're really interested, they made a visit here, they're a similar city, they're a gold mine instead of a copper mine, but they have similar things that we do. They just want us to consider being part of it as a sister city, whatever. There's a lot of cities in Arizona that are sisters cities to Mexico, so I guess we need to really get a, maybe a presentation to add to that.
Okay. No, we can do that, we can add that on presentation. And I will say that we're gearing up with our council work groups too, and so we'll have some council work group findings to announce as we go through the next couple of months. And that's, but no, we can definitely put the sister city presentation on for the twenty-second. Well, I believe, unless it's really overcrowded or something else.
Future gen, any other ones? Motion to adjourn?
Motion, Mayor.
Second.
Second. Motion is second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Six fifty-nine. Less than an hour.